Everybody, staff meeting Tuesday, November the 5th, Election Day. Before we get going on staff meeting, just want to publicly thank the election, all those people that are volunteering and working in elections. Over a hundred polling sites active right now in Sedgwick County and a lot of staff working, so. Uh, we appreciate it's gonna be a long day for them, so we appreciate all the work they're doing. And we encourage all voters that go today, check your polling place. Thirty percent of registered voters in Sedgwick County got a polling place change. And be nice to all the polling staff that are working hard for us today. So that being said, Tom, take it away.
We have, first thing I'm gonna let Commissioner Howell go first. I have three things for our agenda, though. One is, we have a lot of zoo board people here today. Uh, we're gonna discuss the Elephant Barn, uh, and go over some history of. Our relationship with the zoo. We're gonna talk about legislative platform. And if we get time, we'll talk about large event policy. If we don't get to that today, that's fine. But Commissioner Howell, did you want to go first on?
Sure. So, um, thank you for the, uh, chance to speak here. So I have, I've had a couple of, uh, efforts over the last few years trying to get our election results into more. Usable, usable format. In fact, we passed a bill a couple of years ago. I forget the bill number now, but. There was a requirement that we had to, uh, provide, uh, election results in machinery readable format. We're technically doing that now, however, however, I have a problem with. It with how this is being done. I'm gonna show you, um, Nicole, if you go to that tab that talks about election results from. That one right there. You'll notice off the bat, um. There are some results from, uh, different precincts. These are very small precincts. I just picked anything. This is very randomized. Selection, but you'll see if you can zoom in, can you zoom in on that a little bit, please? There you go. Notice, uh, in that top line, there's thirteen votes in that particular, uh, precinct for. A particular race. You can look at, you can look up and down the ballot and you'll see rate, you'll see results very much like that. If you go through the trouble. You could add that up and it would add up perfectly. There is not, um. Uh, and this, and I, when I, when these types of, uh, reports were available. It was hard to get these into an Excel spreadsheet and to do some manipulations and analysis on the data because it was in a. A graphical format. So that was my initial, that was my initial concern. Um, but this type of report has been around for a very long time. If you go back to previous years, I didn't do this, but, um. Maybe I should do that real quickly, but. Anyway, so this, this is kind of an intermediate type of report. There's actually some better reporting happened prior to this type of report. Uh, if you go down to the bottom, down to the bottom there, Nicole, there's an Excel spreadsheet. You can, um. Click on that now. So this is, this is what we have now. And I just did some math real quickly. Notice right off the bat, those right, I, I highlighted those red lines and also highlighted the, the columns on left, although it looks like the projector is messing up a little bit. They look yellow. I highlighted columns E, F, and G. And I did that because you can see that's a very high, high race. That's the US Senate race. There's three candidates. And if you add up all those votes, okay? And subtract, subtract the twenty-one blank ballots that were cast. Uh, I don't know why people cast blank ballots, but they do. If you add up the, uh, votes in those three columns and how many ballots are actually cast. There's, uh, four thousand four hundred eighty-five. Votes that are not shown here. They're redacted. You see where it says redacted? Can you please zoom all the way in there, Nicole? Can you zoom in and see where it says redacted? I have a problem with that. As a person who likes to do analysis on elections, I, I don't think this is good transparent government. And I have a problem with that. So I, I chased this backwards. Notice, notice the number of ballots cast. That's the column C. See where it says, like, uh, line thirty-two there. So it was eighteen ballots. Uh, take that back. Um. And that's, that's, they take that back. Can you go on down and you can find, uh? Uh. So if I understand correctly, there was, there's two hundred and forty-three, I, I think the, can you, can you go back to the top? I'm sorry, Nicole. You have the precinct number on the left, you have registered voters in the column B, and you have ballots cast in column C. You'll notice, so precinct one twenty-four, which is on line twenty-six there. There's only one registered voter and there's only one ballot cast. So we know if you were to look at that result of that precinct, you would know exactly how that person voted because there's only one voter. And that's why it's redacted. So the problem is, we have precincts with have, we have very few voters in them. And I think the threshold for this report is twenty. So there's twenty or less voters in a precinct. It's redacted data. And so to get to that four thousand. Voters. Four thousand five hundred, I'm sorry, four thousand four hundred and eighty-five voters. Um. To get to that number, there's quite a few lines there that are. Redacted. So I say, well, why, why do we have these small precincts? What's causing that to happen? The way I understand it is that if you have a, uh, a city, uh, precinct, let's say precinct one twenty-four, for example, that's District One in the city of Wichita. Let's just say there's a county road and across the street is more city. They will not give it the same precinct number. They will change the number by something. It'll be. Might be a one something, but it will not be one twenty-four. And the reason that happens is because there's a county road that separates city property from city property. And maybe across the street, maybe there's only a couple of houses. It happens all over the county. And that, that drives, if you will, small precincts. So one of my, one of my legislative platform I, uh, needs here is, I wanted to say, if the ballot is the same on both sides of the street. Okay? Maybe one side of the street, you got a thousand voters, but across the street, you only have five voters. I would actually somehow merge those precincts for reporting purposes, so the numbers add up. Anybody who's interested in election security and integrity is gonna be interested in this topic. Is as of right now, we are reporting results that are missing literally thousands and thousands of votes. It's been this way for a number of years. Going back to twenty twenty and before, it did add up, and I could show you all these examples of precincts. That were reported, that were very small precincts. I showed you one a minute ago. And if you go back even before that, like twenty eighteen and before. Reports are, are, I use the word, you can drill down into it. You can actually see the results and you can actually click on the results. And it opens up you, it opens up precinct level results. For every race, if you go back to twenty eighteen and before. So we've, we've bought this new equipment back in twenty sixteen. But yet our reporting methods have changed at least twice since then. I even went to the effort to pass a, a state law, which they did pass. It said it has to be a machine readable for, or machine readable format, which this is. The problem is, it's not. You can't do analysis if you're missing four thousand votes. So I have a problem with that. I, I think the end of, at the end of the day. If the solution is these small precincts are redacted because of voter privacy. Then if there's an adjacent. Precinct that has the same ballot, then in terms of reporting, we should be able, allowed to report them together. To hide the, to, to, to avoid missing the, uh, or should I say disclosing the, the privacy of your voters in the small precincts. And the way you do that, I would say you might have, you know, one twenty-four. It may, I imagine that's very, maybe the balance exactly the same as one twenty-three, for example. I would, I would report that somehow. It's, it's clear that both of those precincts are in that total. It's not, it's, it's actually a very easy solution. I'm not sure exactly how to implement that technically. But in terms of, it's, in, in terms of it checking that box, it would solve the problem. Anybody have any questions on that? I think we come, I think that is the first bullet under the election office discussion on platform. I think we come back and circle. We can come back to this later, but someone wanted me to talk about why I have this up on the screen that now you know.
Yeah, very good. Okay, um. As I said, we have a number of, uh, zoo board people and zoo staff here today. Um. Several months ago, we found out we had a number of pregnant baby elephants. Uh, since that time, we've had a lot of discussion. At staff level and at the commission level of, uh, the need for a new, an additional. Uh, barn for the baby elephants. Uh, Scott Newland, the zoo director, came into the commission meeting, uh, last week and kind of gave an overview of what was happening there. It is, it is a ten million dollar project. Uh, and it kind of, to be honest, just, uh, uh, came out of the blue on us. Uh, we've had discussion of, um. There's potential grant out there, a federal grant to pay for. The barn and a one-to-one match scenario. So just doing the math, that's a five million dollar local match and a five million dollar federal grant. Uh, the, uh, whether we'd want to apply for that. And then as we negotiate, navigate that, what is the county's liability? Or how much is the commission comfortable with as far as a county liability moving forward on this project? Um. And that can be anywhere from zero to ten million dollars, basically. So today, as we have this discussion, and we will revisit this on November thirteenth at the BOCC meeting for some type of formal vote from you all, but for today. It's a discussion. And I wanted, uh, Justin to kind of talk, take us back into history and the, let's talk about the agreement between the zoo society. And the county, it goes back decades, so we have to, for the current commission and current staff, we, it's probably time to refresh on that. Uh, Tim will present a little bit on, uh, the current agreement. And then Lindsay will, I think, talk about the grant. Lindsay, correct? So we got several presenters here, uh, and then we have zoo board people here if there's questions or if they would, uh, Chairman, up to you, if they would want to comment, but. Um, so Justin, could you start us with the history of this and then we'll, we'll take the discussion from there?
Certainly. Uh, Justin Waggoner, County Counselor. Uh, as Tom said, I kind of, it looked into really the, the history on the zoo and also the, uh, agreement and as it regards to facilities. Cause obviously what Tom was just discussing involves zoo facilities and how the contract handles those things. Um, for, for background, in nineteen sixty-six, Sedgwick County voters approved Sedgwick County bonding out costs for the initial acquisition development of the Sedgwick County Zoo. Uh, that also included the Sedgwick County Park, which is just to the west of the zoo. So it was all as part of one vote. Uh, it was approved by the voters. At that time, the Board of County Commissioners approved a resolution that clarified that Sedgwick County would be responsible for the maintenance of the zoo and the park properties. Um, and of course, Sedgwick County owns all the land that comprises of the Sedgwick County Zoo. Uh, also, we own all the buildings. The. The county and the Zoological Society first entered into contracts starting in nineteen sixty-six. There's been a series of them. We're currently in an agreement that was reached in two thousand and five. A fifty-year agreement, so we're nineteen years into a fifty-year agreement with them. Uh, the operating agreement in particular is what I'm referring to. And while the county, again, is generally responsible for properties and buildings that we own, this agreement is a bit of an exception to that because it actually vests that. Responsibility with the Zoological Society. So they're responsible. They lease the zoo premises and the improvements, and they have the exclusive right to occupy and operate the zoo, the Zoological Society, a not-for-profit organization. They're responsible for all custody, care, maintenance, and development of the land, buildings, and other improvements in the zoo property. It also says that if the Zoological Society wants to make any improvements to existing buildings, wants to build new buildings, they have to get approval of Sedgwick County in order to do so. And it's worth noting that, uh, whenever that agreement ends in twenty fifty-five, or if it terminated before then. Um, those are still assets of the county. So the county is ultimately responsible for any of that property and the buildings, uh, any. Insurance liability, things along those lines. So, um, those are, it is all county property at place there. So this has been a longstanding public-private partnership. It's worth noting, the responsibility today does vest with the society to pay for those things, but it's also worth noting, it's not been uncommon. Uh, for the counties, and I will give a couple of recent examples, provide funding for zoological improvements. Recent examples are in twenty fifteen, there was five point three million dollars of Sedgwick County, uh, put towards the construction of the Elephant Barn. Uh, in twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-one, there's a total of six million dollars that Sedgwick County contributed for the zoo entrance and gift shop project. Um, so there is some precedent in history that doesn't bind, uh, the Board of County Commissioners to do anything. In this case, like Tom said, it could be zero to ten million dollars. It's up to the will and discretion of the board in terms of what, uh, you all may wish to do. Um, also on this, um, did want to note that. The, uh. And Lindsay's gonna talk some about the grant. Um, and this is, this, this particular grant that Tom referenced, that's gonna be on your agenda, uh, for a grant application. Is the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act Grant, and I talked about that probably a couple of months ago to Board of County Commissioners staff me. It's the same grant that applies to. Actually already to the zoo property, the Sedgwick County Park property, Lake Afton, and also the Northeast Sedgwick County Park. And when I was talking then, I was talking about the encumbrances that come along with those grants. It's federal grant funding through the US Department of the Interior. Um, between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen eighty-one, on four different occasions. Sedgwick County received what totaled more than four hundred thousand dollars in LWCF Act grant funding. Um, to both develop and expand the Sedgwick County Zoo for various projects and also the Sedgwick County Park. Um, what's, what's noteworthy about this is the land is already encumbered. So if, if the county does apply for this grant and if we are awarded the grant. There would not be additional restructuring, uh, encumbrances above and beyond what we already have on the property. And the, the encumbrance is that can only be used for outdoor public recreational purposes, and it's our understanding that's, that's exactly what the zoo is for and what this potential project would be for. So that's just some background on the grant. Lindsay's gonna talk in more detail about some of the specifics on it. Um, if you have any questions, happy to answer them, or if you want to be wait until later, uh, Chairman, I'll kind of defer to you or, uh, your preference on that.
Good job. Any questions for Justin? Yeah, um, if you don't mind, thank you, Chairman. So you said it's LWCF grant? And you have received how much money in the past?
It was over four hundred thousand dollars when you total it between those four, four grants. I, I can get that.
On average, about a hundred thousand per grant?
Yeah, it was a little.
Yeah, it's how, over how many, those are four grants, uh, awards, so that represents at least four years, I guess, but.
Yeah, it was, the, the timing was between nineteen seventy-two and nineteen eighty-one, uh, as to when those were awarded. But yeah, we've, we've had prior experience. This grant, obviously, it's been forty plus years, uh, since we've entered in one of these for the Sedgwick County Zoo.
And you said this is, the, the money is reserved for outdoor. Can you please say that again? What did you?
Yeah, outdoor public recreation purposes. Um, and, and in this case, it's our understanding at a staff level that this, uh, the proposed Elephant. Boma Project would be outdoor public recreation purpose and would fit into what the US Department, I mean, we have no idea if they're, if they would approve it or not, but we. Believe that would fit into their, uh, eligibility requirements.
So I'm a little confused a little bit on, on the, on the grant itself, so, um. How much money do they grant out each year and, um? Do we have, someone mentioned this money is at the, at the state level right now. Is that true?
Um, I may look to Lindsay on that, cause I'm not a hundred percent certain. The state certainly administers this program, but I'm not sure. I think the money is ultimately held at the federal level, but Lindsay.
It is. They, they go through an allocation process and award it to states for then states to pass through, and Carrie Malin is our expert grant administrator. And we will circle back after, I think, Tim has a presentation and then I'll get into some of the details. So if it's okay to circle back to your questions on the grant specifically, we may get through some of those details when I talk. And then if not, certainly I will rely on Carrie to help as the subject matter expert on the grant. Is, if that's okay with you.
That'd be fine. Okay. I have other questions. I'll, I'll reserve my questions to later. Thanks. All right, Tim.
Thank you.
Morning Commissioners. I'm gonna just provide a little high-level, uh, description of the project and kind of where we're headed in terms of funding for that project. So. The Elephant Family Boma Project is required because the, there are five elephant births anticipated between late February, early March of twenty twenty-five through September. Of twenty twenty-five. I don't think anybody anticipated that all five births would, uh, there was a hope that there would be multiple babies. Brought, um, brought about through this project, but I don't think anybody expected all of them in one year, to be born in one year. Um, the additional nineteen thousand square foot barn space will allow the family and herd, and herd management. Including a separate space for bulls if necessary. The estimated cost for construction, indirect costs, the train track reroute and equipment, um, to maintain this, uh, facility is just under ten million dollars. Capital Campaign was announced last month. Leadership group for, um, that Capital Campaign is current, uh. Society Board Chair Melissa Kenober and Mandy Wilbert. And the goal is to raise their funding through the first three quarters of twenty twenty-five with construction completed by the end of twenty twenty-six to assure that. There's adequate space for the entire herd by the winter of twenty twenty-six. Um, the, there's confidence that they can get through that first winter, the winter of twenty twenty-five, because the elephants are gonna be pretty small. For elephant purposes, pretty big compared to people.
Scott, Tim.
Uh, part of the proposed Capital Campaign, county finances worked with Zoological Society Board and Staff on a grant application that will be presented to you on the thirteenth. Um, we've got, uh, Lindsay's got some information specific to the grant, and we've also got folks from the society. That would be able to answer any capital campaign questions if you may have them.
Okay, very good. Any questions for Tim? Hey, Lindsay. Thanks, Tim.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna cover a lot of information. If I go too fast, slow me down. Uh, and I do want to thank Carrie Malin. She is our grant administrator. She will actually be presenting this item to you next Wednesday. She has done the yeoman's, uh, work on this for, on the county side. So I will say what I know, and then if you have specific questions, uh, I appreciate her being here to help me out. So. And the project is, uh, is exactly as what you've heard. Uh, the zoo hopes to have the lead donor commitments. This is what we have put in our application. We hope to have the commitment secured by quarter one twenty-five. General public commitments by quarter two of twenty twenty-five. Break ground in quarter three twenty-five and have the new barn open by fall of twenty-six. This is important because one of the things that I don't think we've talked about so far is that this grant is a reimbursement grant. So money will actually have to be spent, um, again, in compliance with federal procurement because it's federal money. And so that will, um, we, we would set it up to essentially be a pass-through, so the society in compliance with the agreement would be the ones to actually do the construction. Do the letting, do all of that for the bidding and construct it. Um, and then, uh, the county, assuming we receive these funds, which we won't know until fall of twenty twenty-five. Even though our application is due November fifteenth of twenty twenty-four. Um, we would essentially be passed through, um, to the zoo as a sub-precipient. So, uh, to answer your question, Commissioner Howell. Uh, these funds are coming from the Land and Water Conservation Fund State and Local Assistance Program. It's operated by the National Park Service in partnership with designated state lead. LWCF agencies, which in our case is the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks. Congress allocates money from that to this program, which is then apportioned to states based on a legislative formula. So. I know that we continually have the discussion about federal spending and all of those things. However, in this case, the money is already allocated. Um, I assume that if it's not allocated to us, it gets redistributed to others, so we want to make sure we have our, our fair share bringing those funds back to the community. Uh, application eligibility is for a local government. Uh, a park within a city of thirty thousand or more within a disadvantaged track or directly a budding one. Now, in this case, even though we're talking about the zoo, the Kansas. Excuse me, the Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks has clarified that we're eligible because we can explain how the park area serves an underprivileged community. These applications are due to the state by November fifteenth. Uh, we would be notified by the fall of twenty twenty-five. And then we would have a three-year project period, and that works out just fine, given the timeline that we've heard that the zoo needs to have. The Elephant Barn up and running once the elephants outgrow, uh, their current space. Uh, we do have to do a match, and that share has to be secure or firmly committed at the time that we apply. And so if the project match exceeds the one-to-one requirement. The budget must indicate how the additional funds or in-kind contributions will be used. And that can come from state, local, non-governmental, private sources in the form of cash or donation or in-kind service and materials. And we also have been encouraged to seek congressional delegation support, so we'll be working on that too, um, within the next few days. So we obviously have, as a part of the agenda item next week, we will have a consent agenda item. That would put forth the county's match of two point five million. That would be our capped contribution regardless of whether the grant is received or not. We have explicitly stated in that funding that this is coming from the excess investment income. That the county has received this year. Last week, Hope Fernandez, your accounting director, sent you all the quarterly investment report that we're required to send by policy. You saw how astonishing, uh, the results have been this year, how well above. Average they are. And so we are specifically stating that the two point five million for this one-time match would come from that one-time source of revenues. So in no case is this any kind of recurring revenue, property tax burden or anything like that, um, for this match. So that is the information I have for you at a high level. Again, Carrie is here and she can tell me if I fibbed about anything. I'm good. Okay. So, and if you have other specific questions, she can, uh, have her come up. Yes, sir.
We do. Thanks, Lindsay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh, is there a maximum on how much we can request?
Uh, so the, since the project is ten million and it's a one-for-one match, we can request the five million.
So. If we put it in, um. You couldn't request more than ten million?
Correct. Okay. It has to be for a specific project, and we have to submit a very detailed construction budget, which we have, I mean, broken out across three pages.
Okay. And you know how much total that the state of Kansas has available, that other people are putting in for grants too?
Um, I don't know. Carrie, do you happen to know how much the state has available to it right now?
Um, I may, uh, verify that. It's not actually an allocation. It's.
Oh, can you come up to the podium? So people. Or actually, Lynn, would you? Let her borrow your mic?
Hey, Carrie, thank you.
Very good. Your administrator. So just to clarify the.
Oh, sorry. Uh, just to clarify, the ORLP is the grant we're actually applying for. It's a part of the LWCF. Uh, the ORLP is actually a competitive application, so it's not a exact, um, allocation that the state has received. We'll be working with the state to submit our initial application. They'll decide if they want to support it, and if they do, they'll send it off to the federal. Um, NPS to decide if they're going to approve it or not. So there's not a set amount that Kansas was allocated.
So we don't know how much the state has available to allocate it all?
That is correct, but the max for this, uh, application is ten million.
Okay. Um, and what are the criteria? To apply? What's the details? So what are we saying that we're gonna provide that we need ten million dollars for?
So it's this Elephant Boma Project that's, and it's the construction budget for that, and we are eligible because of that criteria we've talked about with regard to. We're a local government, a park within a city of thirty thousand or more within a disadvantaged track. And Carrie specifically reached out to the Department of Wildlife and Parks to clarify that though this is not necessarily a park in a disadvantaged track because of the population served. It's eligible, and Carrie can add any details to that that I missed.
Correct. They instructed us to just indicate how the zoo is reaching out to the. Correct. They instructed us to just indicate how the zoo is reaching out to the more impoverished areas of the community to provide these services since they're not directly in the neighborhood.
Well, the only reason I am trying to clarify this is that I I don't know how much is available. And we may be competing against other entities across the state of Kansas for the same dollars. So I want to make sure that they're very, we're very specific in saying that this is the number one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas, has a huge economic impact on this entire region. Are these the kind of things that are in? I haven't seen the the application. So are these the kind of things that are in that to show that this is above and beyond? We we've got data when we first got the elephants on how it increased the attendance of the zoo. Well, you put five baby elephants in that, and that's going to blow that attendance away. And so are we documenting all that? We have earlier projections or not projections, actual data on on the impact of the elephants. And now they how that we can kind of look towards the future on that impact.
In regards to the application, what they're asking for, they're really asking us to tie in how this project is working with the outdoor recreation and how that's increasing that or providing a service that's not currently available. We could actually include that kind of information into the application of the narrative. And we do really focus on how this really diversifies Kansas in our outdoor recreation opportunities because it's so unique. Because this is the first time in Kansas that elephants are being born in Kansas. So this really sets us apart from anywhere else in the state, let alone other states, you know, having this opportunity.
Okay, well, I just want the application to be as strong as possible.
Absolutely.
This is a great opportunity for us. I applaud Justin. He's the one that found this application, this grant. And it's the perfect time. It all comes together at one point. And I'm very proud of everyone that working on this because this is exactly what we need to make sure that we can fund this thing in the future. Thank you.
And Commissioner, I did want to comment. I I think I found some initial stuff, but I didn't want to compliment that. I think Carrie is the one who further investigated this and really got into the detail. So I did want to give some applaud to finance staff and work on that.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, you had mentioned, or maybe it was Lindsay mentioned congressional, the encouragement for congressional support. What's that process look like? And is it just a call to the office for our our board that you're congressman and our senators? Or what does that look like exactly?
We actually have already reached out to Jim Davenport and were trusting that he could help us get connected with our staff. And I think that is to Commissioner Dennis's point, a prime opportunity for our congressional delegation to brag on the zoo and what it does for the economy and what it does for our area. So I know Tom had already reached out. We'll circle back and make sure that we get those letters of support. And then yes, certainly if we need the commissioners to help us with getting those requests, maybe we'll reach out at the right time.
Okay, please let us know. Other questions on the grant? Commissioner Howell.
I'm just trying to do some quick research because I didn't know the the name of this grant. But this grant program was established in 2014. So we may have had LWCF grants in the past, but they could not have been this program. So just throw that out there. Looks like the administration this year has announced 254 million dollars in grants going to twenty four different states in 2024. So if that's typical, then I would expect if that was what happened in current year, that's probably made. In fact, that two that 254 million dollars may include, because of the timeline we're talking about here, may include this potential application for what we're actually asking for. I don't even know where to begin. You know, this idea that the government's going to spend the money one place or the other. I mean, it really is an allocation from the government to the entire the administration is going to hand that money out to different grant applications. So you're right. I believe that your explanation is correct. They're going to spend the money. So on one on one side of the equation, I wish they would stop. I mean, this is we're we're nearly 36 trillion dollars in debt as a country now. We're going to pass that that 36 trillion dollar mark literally within a month or so. And I I don't think it's appropriate for people in different states to pay for a local a local need. And I I think fundamentally, I'm I'm bothered by this. The reason we're going to do this is because that's what they do. We're going to participate in in their bad financial management. I believe that we could raise this money. I I I have no doubt we're going to make an application because, as you said, if we were trying to get our own money back, and I hate to vote against trying to get our own dollars back, but fundamentally, it's a bad program for the country. They shouldn't do this to any. They shouldn't provide this money to any community. I mean, you mentioned people from states that are have have poverty issues. They're being taxed theoretically at least to hand money out to other states and have these opportunities. It's a redistribution redistribution of wealth. If you read the constitution, you can't find a a a defense for this type of activity or spending. This is fundamentally flawed. But because they're going to spend the money, we're going to apply for it. And I guess I'll probably support that. When's it going to stop? We we our country is going to have to deal with this at some very fundamental level. And when is it going to stop? I don't like this because, you know, again, if you think about way to raise to raise money, I can't think of anything more compelling to raise money for the baby elephants. Everyone loves baby elephants. I love baby baby elephants too. And if I'm if I'm correct, Exploration Place just raised how much money in the last year or so for their cap campaign? What was their? Anybody know? Tim, do you know?
I think right now they're at about 23 million that they've raised in a couple of years.
I I just think that in no offense to Exploration Place that we love them. But I think baby elephants can generate 10 million dollars pretty quickly. And I don't I don't think we really have to do this. I I think our two and a half million dollars is probably reasonable, but here's the here's the thing, though. I think they can. I think they can raise all of the money pretty quickly. The question is if we have to commit this money on the front end to apply for this grant. I'm a bit bothered by the the way that this is being presented to us because you mentioned earlier, Lindsay, that there's a capital need. They they're putting together capital list, a capital list for us to focus some dollars on to fix our buildings and things like that, maybe a new roof here and there and things like that. So those are our responsibilities. And I think it's great that we have investment income. We can we can connect those dots and say this money is coming from that fund. However, if it wasn't for this project, that money would be used for other important county projects. So it's not like it's free money. I mean, this money would be used to offset property taxes potentially. It would be used for other obligations that the county has. So we can look at like, look at this like it's a windfall, like it's it's one time money, and in a sense it is. But I I say if it wasn't for this project, we would use the money for other really important things for the taxpayers. So I don't want to just act like this is free money because I I think that's the wrong way to look at this. Also, I've been interested in in connecting property, I should say, sales tax dollars or things that are not core functions of government. And again, as much as I love baby elephants, that's not, I don't think this is a core function of government. So having a different source of revenue, I think, checks that box. I can at least get past that point. So I think we can find that, say, the the use of this money for this purpose would be allowable under that resolution I've been proposing. So I think that's that's okay. If the zoo was to raise 10 million dollars for this, could they allocate two and a half million dollars of that money back to taking care of our obligations for these buildings at two and a half billion dollars? Is that okay to say upfront? I think at the end of the day, I'd like to, I think they can raise the money. I really do. You get this grant, we earmark two and a half million dollars of the one time use interest income that we didn't necessarily expect specifically, but it's it's available to us now. It's in excess of what we thought we would get. Therefore, it's 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 usable for like one time county spending ideas. To get this grant, we would use that money for that purpose. It checks the box for the resolution that I've been having. And then if and when they raise a 10 million dollars, I'd like to see them allocate two and a half million dollars back to taking care of infrastructure needs that are on that capital list. Does that? Does that sound reasonable?
You know, we've talked about that in exactly that kind of language to where what we don't want to do is prohibit the society can go out and raising as much money as possible for this project.
Right.
But they we have a list out there, and this goes into a whole nother conversation. But we have a list of capital needs at the zoo that far outpace what we're talking about here today. We have to do something in the future. And while we're talking here, it was the zoo. My two worries are the zoo and the arena. We know that at current revenue generation, we will not even be able to main status quo in those areas, much less make them premier or keep them premier. So we're going to have to have a further discussion about in the future about revenue for these two entities. But back to your point, Commissioner, how we had the discussion, if the society can go out and raise this money and exceed the raise level on this, Scott has plenty of capital projects that he needs to be done, that need to be done at the zoo, millions.
Oh, I'd like to be really Christmas. I challenge them to raise the 10 million dollars. I think they can do this for baby elephants. I'll write a check. Okay, I'll I'll donate money myself. I think this community is going to love the idea of having baby elephants. I think raising 10 million dollars, I think actually is something that they they could say, our goal is to raise 10 million. I know, but they do that very quickly. By the way, I like to encourage naming rights for this project. They need to have naming rights to generate some funds for getting someone's name on that project that says so and so is our our chief donor to this project. And they have a a namesake that gives them recognition forever as long as the zoo's in existence. I think that needs to be part of this as well. So I think we have a plan to go forward, but I would like, I don't know how to, I don't have to articulate what I described. If that's agreeable to my colleagues, agreeable to staff, agreeable to the Zoological Society, I'd like to capture that idea at least in some documents that we would consider on Wednesday.
Well, and just a note for the matching funds, one of the notes that I have and Carrie can correct me if I say this incorrectly. But if the project match does exceed the one to one requirement, the budget has to indicate how those additional funds are going to be used. So we almost have to be able to say if more funds are raised, how those dollars will go. And so I think that this is certainly in line with what the grant requires us to do. So we can make sure.
It would be capital to this park, to specifically to this park. So in terms of how to present this to the community, I think the county is committed to the zoo. We have always have been. And by the way, just to have this exhibit enlarged the way we're talking about, and someone please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's a plan for seven more elephant keepers as as part of the staff that takes care of these these elephants. And then you add in things like other things that elephants need. We're probably, I'm guessing around a million dollars a year total to have this expansion.
It may be significantly less than that. I think if we, there's an idea that they can reallocate some of their existing keepers and maybe add four to five keepers. And so that'd be in the 300 to 450,000 dollar range in terms of salary. And they're raising money to purchase the equipment that they'll need to main, the additional equipment that they'll need to maintain the project.
And in in terms of the total cost, there's other costs in terms of like these employees get benefits plus on top of this, there's food and other things that mature elephants need to to be there. So I don't know what the total cost is for the to have that many elephants that are at our site, what that total cost is. But it might be interesting for you guys to present that to us.
I'll certainly work with Scott to come up with that number.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, I I completely agree with Commissioner Howell on the federal government spending is out of control. We keep running up the debt every single day. But does that negate opportunity that we have coming before us to do something great for our community? I don't think it does because if we don't take that money, somebody else is going to take it. It's there. It's already been allocated. So us turning it down would hurt our community. So I I am fully in support of trying to get this grant because someone else will take that money. In addition, take a look at what the future is. We're going to go into an AZA inspection here very soon. I don't remember what day it starts, but one of the things that they look at in the AZA inspection is what are the conditions that we're putting our animals in? What kind of buildings and improvements do we have to make to those facilities in order to pass and save the inspection? And we've got over 70 buildings. And guess who all 70 of those buildings belong to? They don't belong to the Zoological Society. They belong to Sedgwick County. We we just passed a budget for 2025, and in that we cut the CIP funding for maintaining those buildings. I know that funding is tough going into 2025, but it's penny wise and pound foolish to do that. And if if we go even further and say that we're not going to take a look at what we need in order to be able to to get through this AZA inspection and maintain over 70 buildings, then we're the ones that are going to be deferring maintenance and deferred maintenance is the worst thing that you can do. And because it's going to cost us more in the long run. So I I sympathize with your concerns. I truly do on applying for a grant. But for us not to apply for that grant has a ripple effect on everything else that we do, and it will hurt our community. So I am fully in support of applying for this grant, and hopefully we can get it. And we know we got five new baby elephants on the way. And next year, I I hope to come back and join you all with a ribbon cutting of a new bone. Thank you.
Aaron, just to be clear, I don't want to be misunderstood. I said I support the grant under those terms. I think that, again, I understand your point that they're going to spend the money no matter what. And again, because they're going to do this no matter what, we're going to play the game. We're going to go and have our hands out and say, give it to us as well. That's what we're going to do. I implore the federal government to stop these programs. Before 2014, this thing did not exist. And you wonder why we're 36 trillion dollars in debt. That's why. So again, I agree, we'll apply for the grant. We will get the money hopefully, offset some fundraising efforts here. That'd be nice to have that here. I agree. But we have got to have a understanding exactly how we're going to do this so that we can do it in a way that doesn't violate. Number one, doesn't violate the issue of using property tax dollars incorrectly. Second of all, I think I'd like to encourage everyone to understand this is baby elephants. Let's challenge ourselves to go raise 10 million dollars. I think we can do it. And if we raise 10 million dollars, it helps the zoo. By the way, two and a half, let's say we get two and a half from this grant, we'll have to go raise seven and a half at that point. Right? To get the to get that 10 million dollars on the table. Our two and a half is part of that seven and a half, but they raised seven and a half. That creates two and a half million dollars that can use for capital. And I would love to have someone from the zoo stand up and explain whether or not they understand this and whether they would support that. Then I'd like to have some feedback before we go. Second of all, I just like to say this, and I keep bringing this up, you know, before, I think it was 2001, the county was mill levy funded. You know, they mentioned about these capital campaigns that we've given to the zoo. One was in 2015, one was in 2019, early recently. You go back in time, this this zoo is over 50 years old now. They were mill levy equivalent funded until 2001. And since then, we've had funding agreements and these capital discussions and these one time gifts. I don't know that this is still best for them. I I I met with them a while back. I argued that I made it clear that they're actually broke even because of the two gifts we've given them of 11.3 million dollars. But they would have had that money on the front end, had we not gone moved away from the levy equivalent funding of 1.359 mils. Calculate it once again. It's about the right number. That's the historic number they used to have was 1.359 mils until 2001. And I guess I would say if our if our obligation, if our if our commitment to the zoo was mill levy, mill levy calculated, if you will, these types of requests may not be necessary. They would have the money on the front end rather than having to come out here and beg for us to give them extra money on the backend. If you want to support the zoo, I think there's a better way. They deserve it. It's better for them. I don't think they believed me in 2015 when I said this, but I have the numbers to back that up. We ought to have a discussion about how to get better relationship with the zoo by giving them a better deal. Thank you.
Okay. I do want to invite, I don't know, I know Melissa, you were here and there's a thing. I know Scott's not here, but Steve is here as well. If there's an opportunity for someone from the Zoological Society, maybe share some thoughts. We'd love to hear. Melissa, that'd be good.
Just right up here.
Yeah. Melissa, good morning. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Good morning. Melissa Kenober, Zoological Chair, Society Chair. First of all, I just want to say thank you to everyone for your support, continued. We appreciate all that you do, have done. The continued support always. Commissioner Howell, we certainly hear you, and we've met before on this topic and definitely had good discussion. And as part of our fundraising efforts, we absolutely agree that hopefully we can exceed our 10 million dollar goal. And we do have the intent to endow remaining funds for the sole purpose of continued support for our elephants and CIP going forward.
Very good. Hey Melissa, any questions for Melissa or Zoological Society? Does you have an endowment now? Do you have a certain endowment that funds Zoological Society right now? No, Exploration Place has their endowment. Does the zoo have an endowment?
We, we do, yes.
Okay, good. Very good. Any other questions? Okay, baby elephants are coming.
They are. We're excited to.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here today.
We appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay. Tom?
Okay, we're to come on November 13th. Now, society members are welcome to stay because we're doing legislative platform next. It's exciting stuff, but otherwise please feel free to leave.
Okay, thank you for that. Next up, Tom.
Yeah, Chairman, we were, we want to talk about the legislative platform now. Tanya has, and she will carry this, but she has presented a fairly comprehensive list of things that we need to talk about for the platform. The goal, of course, it's the first of November. The goal is by the first of December to have this trimmed up and ready to take to our lobbyists and we will, I think Tanya will invite him to a meeting on the third of December for finalization. But today is our first blush to take a look at this and have her go through it and maybe add or subtract or amend as we go. So Tanya.
Hey, Tanya.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. So as Tom mentioned, this is our draft of our 2025 legislative platform. So there's a couple of things I just want to preface with. What you see in front of you is a collection of items and priorities that I've heard from commissioners, division directors and department heads to put on our platform. I do want to say that the language that you see here is not anything that's legislative platform ready. They are just the items to start the discussion. As Tom mentioned, we probably want to look at the items, see what we want to move forward as far as priorities. So some things may stay, some things may get removed. And then once we decide what stays, that's when I'll kind of go through and refine it and make sure that the language is ready for our legislative platform. And then as Tom mentioned, Jessica and Jason will be here on December 3rd and I think they will also help us to have that discussion of what we want to move for for our 2025 legislative platform. So with that, I don't know if the best way to go through this is item by item, or I don't know if you've had an opportunity to see this and then just want to call out maybe some items. I'm happy to go through each particular item. And then of course I've asked department heads, division director and electeds that I'm going to kind of lean on them as I'm trying to learn this myself and ask them to help me kind of explain some of these items that are on here. So with that, I can actually just kind of start on the first item and go through that. That sounds good. Okay. So of course we break it apart as appropriations and as policy. So we'll start with appropriations. And the first item is appraiser and elections office. So what we're asking here is to support legislation either for additional budget for the county elections office in the county appraiser office or for the state to take over full control of these functions and offices. So basically what we're saying is this is a state mandate that we are providing local property tax funding. And then if you recall, when KAC came to the, to all the counties and asked if there's anything that they wanted to put on the KAC platform, we moved this issue to KAC and they put this, I would say generally under their platform, under tax and finance. But when I'm happy to read that, how they, how they stated that under their platform.
Quick question. We talked about appraiser and election office and both those are costing us money that we think should be coming out of the state. But on the back end of this, at the very end, before you go to policy, we have the treasurer and that's another one. Why wouldn't they all be together?
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner. I don't know. The way that I had this and Lindsay, I may look to you and Brandy as well. This was kind of separated because I felt like this was maybe a different priority and maybe a higher priority than the way that their appraisers and elections offices allocated on this. But I'm happy if you want to speak to that.
I can speak to that. So what we're asking for with regard to the treasurer's office is related to their motor vehicle fund, making sure that there's enough money included in that. It's already a state function. They're already performing it through a county treasurer. There's already a separate funding source. As opposed to appraiser and elections where those both are already statutorily required to be in the county's general fund. They are already making it completely reliant on however the county chooses to fund it. And so I think there's a distinction in that they have already recognized that the auto license fund is different and distinct and truly a subcomponent of the state. They have not yet made that same recognition on the appraiser election side. And I think we would like to see that look more like the motor vehicle tax side. And Brandy, if you have anything else to add, please.
I would also add in, I separate them in my mind. I asked the same question, Commissioner, a few weeks ago. The treasurer is elected by the people of Sedgwick County. The appraiser and the election commissioner are state appointed officials that the local taxpayer here has really very little control over. Brandy works for the people. She's elected countywide. Same with Kelly and Tanya. So I think that the local taxpayer has some accountability here locally that with the appraiser and the elected official, we do not have local accountability. That's how I separated in my mind.
Well, I understand that. But fact is that all of these are costing our local taxpayers money that should be coming from the state. The tag office should be fully funded by the state. The appraiser's office should be funded by the state. The elections office should be funded by the state, that they're mandating every one of those functions. So how do we tell them you're forcing all of this down on the property taxpayers in the county instead of you taking care of it when you've got several billion dollars sitting there in excess funds?
I think my specific question is, because I think we're on the same page if we all want to address this and think that the state has a greater obligation. This is referencing in here, I don't know if you have a copy, Brandy, but KAC platform, tax and finance, number one. I just want to make sure what that's referencing that our, that our treasurer is okay with what KAC platforms, number one. If that's what you want us to advocate for alongside them. Or if you have a different plan that you'd like to share that you think that we need to be more aggressive with.
No, I think the support in the motor vehicle increased funding is, is perfect. The treasurers have been working on this for eight years now and getting nowhere. And finally, it's, it's getting significant enough and it's impacting counties enough that now commissioners and are getting involved in understanding that this is a, an issue. And it's, it's going to just continue to, to get worse until something is done. So I.
Is the official request that we're going to be asking and coming alongside KAC with is just to increase the the fee or is it giving local treasurers more autonomy in determining their fees?
And the treasures, so there's a legislative committee and then inside that legislative committee, there's a group of about five of us that are trying to determine how do we want to address this? Because we've been addressing it, like I said, for about eight years now and it was just to increase the, the fee, the facility, the fee, so that way we could cover our costs. Now that hasn't passed, so we're, we're trying to rethink this. How are we going to do it? And because Sedgwick County's needs are significantly different than say what Haskell County's needs are, it's tough to come up with, how do we address this? Because I need more money than Haskell County needs and if we do something that satisfies Haskell County, it's not going to satisfy us. So, so that's, that's where we're at. We, in the past, we've gotten it past the House multiple times. The Senate has never passed it. Our holdup is with the, with the leadership there in the Senate. So I've asked that possibly we could get a meeting with the Senate president and discuss it to see what would he like us to, how would he like us to word this or address this? That way we could get it passed. So that's an option that the treasurers are looking at. We're also looking at, so currently Kador is allowed by statute to create a contract with a third party entity for title services. And in that contract, they can charge, I believe the contract that they have right now with the entity is $10 for a title where statute only allows the county treasurers to charge a $5 title fee. So we're, we're meeting with Kador and going to ask them, can we be, can we have a contract? But my question there is, is, and the legal question there is, will our treasures considered a third party vendor? Since, since we're elected. And so that's, that's, that's a meeting that they're hoping to have here in the next few weeks with David Harper over at Kador to get direction there. Another option that we're looking at is then the, the same option that we've looked at for the last eight years is increasing that, that fee that we get to a $10 fee. And it's, but right now that we know that that fee isn't a, enough to substantiate and cover where we're at today. So we need to look, what does that fee need to be?
Well, that's helpful.
So, so we've got options. It's just, what is the best, best route to take? One, meet with Kador. Is, is, is there the legal ability to be a third party vendor and have Kador create a contract with all the treasurers? And increase in the title fee. An option there is, you know, like I said, right now we're allowed to have $5. We know this third party vendor that they work with in Topeka gets $10. So can we maybe, can we do a $15 fee?
Well, that's helpful. I just want to make sure if we're going to reference alignment in KAC's platform, that it's alignment.
Yeah.
For Sedgwick County, for your purposes and not something for another county statewide. So just, we'll, we'll keep vetting that part out.
So that's, I mean, I, I hate that I don't have an exact answer as far as where we're going. It's just, we don't, there's just, there's so many, there are 105 counties and we can't come to a consensus of what's the best route to go.
Understood. Well, that's helpful analysis. Appreciate that.
Is it helpful for me to read how that reads on their platform?
It would be for me, yes.
Okay. So under taxation and finance states, number one, state mandates, KAC opposes all unfunded mandates by the state and we support state funding for any current statutory mandates. This includes opposing reallocation of local funding into the state general fund. KAC supports fee structures that will allow county departments to recoup costs associated with state mandated services and allow counties to provide mandated services to their communities.
In front of mandate. Okay. Thank you.
Just a, just a question, you know, I don't know who generates EROs at this executive reorganization order, I guess is what it's called. Who generates EROs in the state of Kansas? Is that only from the governor's office? Remember when SRS was changed to DCF, for example? Or when Medicaid in Kansas was changed to CAN Care? Those are, those are both a consequence of EROs. And the legislature tries to vote on those EROs, but it's reorganization of state government and not suggesting your office would essentially do the same services. But I think fundamentally, structurally speaking, I think the KDOR ought to take a greater role in both the appraiser's office as well as the tag and title office. It doesn't mean that you can't do the work on behalf of the state of Kansas, but I think they should own it. This is an ERO level recommendation where we're changing how we do this forever. It's, it's structurally reorganizing maybe those functions under, under the department revenue, not just in, not just in function, but really in authority. And I'm not sure how to say differently, but it should be, for example, the state runs the driver's license offices. In some counties, maybe that would be this, a joint office, for example. Maybe it's in some states, some counties, maybe it's two, some counties that may be joint. Some counties that may not be, you know, logistically right to be together, but at least it'll give them the option of trying, trying to find ways to give them greater oversight and how this is done and make them own, if you will, the financial side of what's happening.
And, and that's so history. The state used to do majority of these functions and then as the treasures there each year, it seems like we get a different, we get added things to us each year. So they're, they're reducing their staff there in, in the state, at the state level in Kador. And then passing down those, those job duties to the treasurers to take care of them in our offices, but yet they're not compensating and, and helping us keep up with the cost of those. For the driver's license office, I'll tell you, most of the county treasurers run the driver's license offices and the tag offices in their community. Sedgwick County is rare that we, we have the state here running that particular office. But if you go to any of the surrounding counties, it's the treasurer who runs that.
So if this is, if this is historically, I guess, was more of a state level financially managed office, again, the actual people in the office to do the work might need to report to someone local here. You know, I think you, you know, the county treasurer is, is, makes sense to me, but I want the state to step back up again and take on, take on the financial responsibility of these offices. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And really, because, because they both technically work for KDOR, these costs really are not within our control. This is completely there. Essentially, you work for the state of Kansas on that regard. You do what they tell you and you do it the best of your ability, you know, but they're, they have oversight, not the county commission. This is, I, I think, I think this is an ERO discussion. We should probably talk to Jason and Jessica to find out whether or not we can initiate an ERO because frankly, this is evolved into a form of government, which I don't think is ideal, at least not here. And not because you're doing anything wrong, not because you're doing anything wrong, but financially, our budget is not set up to handle this stuff, this stuff. It needs to be their budget, not ours.
Very good. Appreciate the feedback, Brandy. Very helpful. We'll keep working.
Okay, the next item is com care. And so these are two priorities that they would like to put on our legislative platform. That is from their association of CMHCs of Kansas. So the first one is addressing the needs of the uninsured and underinsured, keeping the promise of mental health reform. The second one then is building career pathways and supporting workforce and partnership with the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence. And I'm just going to be honest with you. I'm going to turn this over to Tim if you have questions.
I'm good.
Well, last year we had that first one, as I recall, on our agenda, word for word. I still don't know what addressing the needs of underinsured is. And so we changed it last year. I brought our legislative platform from last year and we put real things in there, increased the inpatient beds and support 15 million for mental price inpatient beds. We, we put facts, we put action items that we don't have any action items here, but we build pathways and address the needs. I, I think both of those are, we don't ask the legislature what we want them to do.
I think both of these are very subtle asks to continue funding or increase funding for services that are already, that first bullet point references the contract between the state of Kansas and the community mental health centers and it is, it funds services for the uninsured and the underinsured. And so this is a request to protect that funding, to not reduce it, increase it potentially. It's been flat for a number of years now. So that's, that ask is that's specific funding that comes from KADADs to the CMHCs, including com care. And so we want to make sure that that funding stream stays. And then the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence is something that was newly funded in 2024 by the legislature and it is designed specifically to increase the quality of behavioral healthcare across the state in large part by addressing staffing issues. And so they've spent some, they received about $5 million this first year. They spent a significant amount of that on psychiatry and we, the desire from the association and from com cares that they continue to fund the Behavioral Health Center of Excellence so that we can transition to clinical staff and nursing staff and those sorts of things as well. So their funding asks, they're asking to maintain and hopefully increase at some point in time, those two funding streams.
And let's go to the second one, building career pathways. We know that in certain places, if people go to work out in Western Kansas, that they want to get tuition help, they can have some of that forgiven. We're building a huge mental health hospital here in Sedgwick County and we couldn't staff it if we had to right now. Why aren't we asking for things that are, can it help us here in Sedgwick County? And any other larger that's not getting the same type of, of impacts to build our workforce, but building career pathways and supporting workforce, that doesn't tell me anything. Again, I, I don't think we're being specific.
Okay, we'll keep that conversation moving. There are some things that I see down in public services that are related to some of that stuff. They're pretty specific. So, but I agree on the specificity on some of it. If you want to continue on with CDDO.
I say this every year, we do this. If you don't know which statute you're trying to amend or what language you're trying to insert, we're not there. You have, if I told someone, write a bill to do this, they give me this puzzle look like, what do you exactly want me to do? That's the question. What are we asking them to do exactly? If we're just talking about supporting this and supporting that and that's not specific. that's not specific, that, that, those are positions, they're not necessarily action items to go do something. So we, if we're going to develop, again, as we do this, please pull out the things that are saying, I know which statute to fix, I know words we want to interject or what works to, to amend or whatever. It's got to be at that level to write that bill. Thanks.
Tony, I'm going to ask, this has not gone through the Jason Watkins filter yet, correct? This is.
I have sent that this to them, they've seen it, but they have not given any movement. So again, the idea was, let's have the discussion, let's figure out what we want on here, what we want to maybe pull off and then get it into the, what Commissioner Howell was saying, get it into the language where it has action items. Okay, um, so CDDO, uh, first item then is support capacity for the state's IDB waiting list. And the second item then is to request to develop strategies to assist the IDB system in supporting individuals with complex mental health needs.
I, I would say some specificity that we can entertain. And Tim, just make jar these for notes or further discussion is, one of the things that would help support capacity on the IDB waitlist is we can, if we could contend for some of our providers and an increase in their day and residential reimbursement rates. Last time the state did that was 22 and it had dramatic increase. But inflation has really settled in and they could really utilize a little bit more reimbursement rate. I think we need to look into that. On the second point, I think we need to be very specific that what we're asking for is some inpatient capacity, uh, crisis capacity on this year. That's one of the things that we took away from last week. I think that's a very specific ask on, and I had made the comment about maybe trying to carve off four beds at the hospital and that wasn't well received in the room with our state partners. Um, so we need to have some inpatient capacity. The third thing too, and again, this could be a separate conversation that I would add to this is Kdad's is starting to show support for some pretty radical adjustments to targeted case management. Um, to where those that provide services, they believe it's a conflict of uh, uh, conflict of interest for them to also have targeted case management. So all the Starkey, for example, other targeted case managers would not be able, they would not be able to have a targeted case manager program. And all these individuals would have to go find other case managers. Um, so that's very high level, but I think this is something we should be concerned about for the providers in the CDDO network. Tim, you can add some color to that if you'd like, but.
That last issue that you raised is the conflict of interest issue is a CMS issue. Um, but we can certainly talk to the state about how they would, if they have to make changes, how they could make changes that are at least damaging to the communities that are serving, that are serving people.
Some of our folks, particularly at Starkey, are very concerned about the conversations at Kdad's right now and what it's going to do to their case managers. So we might, we might join up with them and figure out exactly where their heads at and try to get some more detail. Sure. Great.
Sorry to want more specific, direct information, but uh support capacity for state IDD waiting list. They, they put a cap on the waiting list. I, I've heard some words the other day and I didn't quite understand them. I should have clarified them better, but they were talking about they were below the cap right now, I thought. But I'm not sure that I understood. But are, are they below the cap right now totally?
I believe they are right now, yes. Um, and this ask again is a, maybe the language is just too subtle, but it's an ask to continue to fund waiting lists. Um, to continue to address waiting lists through additional funding.
But just in case we start going above it, we need to eliminate the cap. And we need additional money to start drawing down the people that are on the waiting list. So those are specific needs. But I don't know why we don't go for specific things.
We can certainly make this a little tighter.
Yeah, I, I think that'd be, I think there's some relevancy to that. The other thing too is just when I read support capacity for state's IDD waiting list, my mind immediately goes to if more people came off the waiting list is we don't really have the capacity here in this community to serve them anyways. That's kind of where my head goes is how do we help our network of providers? How do we help them grow the capacity to handle more people coming off the waitlist? That's, am I right interpreting that's what we're getting out there? Okay, so some specific, yeah. Some specific.
We need additional 10 million or whatever we need to do that.
So one of the things, I think, there's two thoughts that go to hit my head and we can work this out as we go. Reimbursement rates so they can have the staffing capacity to do this and housing. Um, there might be some zoning issues or some things that are creeping up that are preventing their housing capacity for some of the day services. So we'll, we'll vet that out, but I agree on the specificity.
Just also throw this out there, this is a pretty big discussion for the state of Kansas. There's a really, there's a few really big topics that are going to come up every year. This is a big topic. They're going to debate this the entire session. And so again, we can put our name on the list and say, we support as a organization, this part of this, that's totally fine to do that. But in terms of displacing another item on our legislative platform, I'd rather not do that because we have so many really important things. I think this belongs in the background saying to our lobbyist, if the topic comes up, Central County is supportive of, you know, doing things to minimize this waiting list or to address the waiting list. But I'm not sure this is one of the, not that it's not important, but we have a unique voice in Central County because of who we represent, our importance to the state of Kansas and Central County. We create, if you will, unique narratives sometimes that nobody else is thinking about or talking about. And this is one of those things where everyone's talking about. So not that we don't support it, but I'm not sure it bubbles up to be the top of our list because of that.
If you don't, I'd add that I, I do think the approach we're taking is unique. I think when I hear 99% of the time, it's just reduce the waitlist, reduce the waitlist. I think what we're saying here is when you reduce the wait, when you reduce the waitlist, we don't have the capacity to support those coming off the waitlist. And I think that is a unique ask that we're actually talking about is, hey, we, we need supports here because you do what you do on the waitlist, but we can't even support those coming off the waitlist now. So I think that's the unique niche that we're bringing into the conversation.
And if that is unique, then we probably should talk about that part. But in terms of the waitlist itself, I think what Commissioner Dennis was talking about initially was, I, I think, not that it's not important, it is very important, but it's also a very overarching topic of every single session.
Um, the next item I'll have Rusty sneak to, uh, which is emergency medical services. And that's support Medicaid reimbursement for treatment in place and transport to alternate destination.
I'll just say that at a high level, when you have Kevin and Angela in the back of the room, if you have questions, but um, as I understand it, this is really a federal congressional um platform issue, because right now this is being, there's been legislation uh in the past couple of years in Washington uh to address grant uh treatment in place or transporting, transporting to an alternate destination. Uh, and there are statistics that Angela has sent me, some, some research and data that shows that uh, there's a dramatic savings to Medicaid uh and or Medicare for patients who are treated in place or transported to an alternate destination as opposed to going to an ED where the cost is much higher. And so there's an effort in Washington to change the rules and allow EMS to treat in place or transport to a minor emergency tour to family physician as opposed to an ED where the cost is much lower and it saves the taxpayers money by doing that. But right now it's at the federal level. Do you have any questions they can address? But I think it probably comes off the state platform. There's something to talk to Jim about um at the federal level for now. If some action is taken in Washington, then the state would need to make adjustments to uh, the program in the state and that, that it would become a state issue. That's not right.
Now, you want to add?
That's good.
Good. Good job, Rusty.
Okay, several items then uh next on public services. So the first one is support addressing the gap for youth in foster care with behavioral health issues.
I think we'll get pretty specific. There is a meeting upcoming in regards to this conversation about what we're doing with some of the JRF stuff. And I think we'll get some more specific language on there, but yeah.
Um, next one I pulled from last year's legislative platform, and that was to support 15 million for mental health or excuse me, for mental crisis in patient beds. And that's a reference to via Christy St. Joe mental health beds. Um, the next items.
Are we just supporting via Christie on this? Uh, I know it was on our agenda last year, but I don't understand yet why we have it on our agenda for just supporting a nonprofit.
My only comment is it's part of the ecosystem for mental health services in the community. There's a lot of different levels of care in the community and that's a, what, what St. Joe provides is unique to our community and to the state really. And it's critical for the whole ecosystem of behavioral healthcare in the community. That's, that's how it made it on last year is because of the unique role that they fill in the community.
You know, I need to talk offline. I've got some concerns about kitchen holding one nonprofit above all others.
Okay. Next item, Tim, I'm going to um reference you on these. So the next one is encourage the state to submit a Medicaid state plan waiver to use up to 5% of their medical spend to address nonclinical social determinants of health, such as housing, nutrition, transportation.
Hmm, interesting.
I'd like to take credit for that idea, but it's happening in a couple of other states as a demonstration project. It's a great way to bring additional resources into the community to address homelessness and other issues related to social determinants of health.
Excited to learn more.
Okay, next item is endow 10 million of opioid settlement and or fudgemanance to provide a pool of funds for communities to apply for to increase availability of housing vouchers to address homelessness. Require one-to-one match for municipalities to address funds if required by opioid settlement requirements. Model the voucher program after shelter plus care and restrict vouchers to persons that experienced opioid addiction or meet the definition of chronically homeless.
What's different from what the state is already doing? Remember, they swept all of our opioid funds except for a few little dribbles that they put out. And they said, we're going to let you apply for uh different grants. What, what's different in this than what they're already doing?
This is just my effort to try and get some of those opioid dollars that the state swept back into the community and to address a specific problem.
They do have a process now that we can apply for those funds.
They're, they, right now, they aren't doing anything related to housing or homelessness.
Yeah.
Which is also a factor in opioid addiction. So that, this is my effort to capture some of those state dollars.
Justin, can we endow money? Can we take tax dollars and things of that sort and endow it? That's a big conversation that's come up recently in other discussions. Is this something that's permissible?
I'm trying to, I mean, I, I'm not sure that the word endowed is used in the way you're referring to it. And Tim, could you correct me if I'm wrong on that? I think he drafted this. Uh, in this context, I think there would be a question as to uh, it might, if this is something that commission is interested in pursuing, it may not be a bad idea for us to reach out to the AG's office, to their attorneys who work on this to see what the limits of this can be. Uh, there are restrictions on how the opioid settlement funding can be, funds can be used. Um, but I think that Tim has some ideas that that could be permissible or has been in other cases, but we can also question that. If you'd like us to.
I didn't check with anybody lately on this stuff.
Your mark or designate are better.
I, I would say, yeah, I agree on that part. Um, I, I mean, I'm curious about the capacity to create endowments. So these are discussions that are coming up and some of our big problems in having an endowment that could, I was looking at lawyers over there, but there's another lawyer that specialized in finance that we could probably.
There is one, and I would be delighted to inject myself into this conversation. So um, the whole idea behind state tax law is that the way our certified budgets are set up is that once you have enough money in your account, it forces you to lower your property tax rate. It sets caps on how much you can set aside. There is very strict rules on how you invest. Um, so while we can do things like set aside funds and capital improvement, or we can set aside funds for equipment reserve, it has to be for a very specific purpose. It would not be to just hold on to taxpayer money, use it to grow and take care of long-term needs. I'm not saying that I don't see the benefits, but it's just contrary to the public policy we have in this state.
Understood. Okay, that answers that question.
Nice try, Sharon.
Yes. Tony, I might have.
Russell, take up for Tony here. Create an opioid settlement matching program where the state matches any local opioid settlement programming initiatives on a dollar, $4 basis for program startup costs. Then match local opioid, opioid settlement expenditures, $1 to $2 for years, two through five of that same initiative.
Well, that's specific.
Same constant, trying to get some of that state opioid money.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Rusty, you're on a roll.
Yeah, create a pool of matching funds for capital expenditures related to the development and implementation of juvenile crisis intervention centers.
Yeah. It's a big topic of conversation we've had frequently and will continue to have here. There is a pool of funds that are out there that we want to try to access.
Steve was in Topeka at the end of last week, where I think there was a conversation about uh these monies and trying to break some monies loose for.
Do we know how much is in that fund right now? 18 million? Sitting there, huh?
And I think, like you said, there's, we'll be having some discussions this couple of times this month on.
Yeah. Thank you.
From local housing program, uh, for housing first program initiatives to decrease homelessness.
Let me ask you a question on that one. Um, it's more of a city program. Wouldn't this be better on our joint platform rather than our individual platform?
Yes.
And before Tonya gets back, I'm going to finish this bullet point. Create a fund that housing developers can access to offset 25% of construction cost to increase the availability of affordable housing in communities with significant homeless populations. Pass it back to.
Good. Very good. Okay. For good time.
Okay, so are we?
Policy now.
Policy, okay.
Can we hold before we go to policy just for one second? Uh, yesterday, Commissioner Meister and I attended the Transportation Coalition meeting. And we need more funding into KDOT in order to be able to do all the projects that we've got here and across the state. And they're sitting on $3 billion up there in the state right now. And can't we advocate for more additional funding to go into KDOT to start taking care of some of these backlogs of high priority projects? Right now, we don't have the money to go east on Kelo. We don't have the money to go west on Kelo. We don't have the money uh to do the Northwest Expressway. There, there's all kinds of high priority projects, but we need more money to do them. Do you have any?
Yeah, that was a topic I, I think we could uh communicate with KDOT and ask how to maybe word that. They may, they may be lobbying themselves as well, but I don't, I don't know for sure. But, but in theory, yes. It is. Those funds are sitting on the KDOT. I think Lynn, you can comment. I mean, it was a 10-year plan and in year three, it's basically not good.
I think uh it would be advisable to reach out to Kansas County Highway Association, which is part of the Kansas, Kansas Association of Counties and see if there's any movement there or if their boards have any interest in pursuing something like that. That's going to have the biggest voice with KDOT and the legislature.
Thank you.
Okay, just to make sure I understand, so we want to put something um regarding additional funding into KDOT on our legislative platform under appropriations. Is that correct?
Yeah, but we want to.
Okay. Okay.
Support.
Sure.
I agree. We're probably not going to take the lead, but yeah, I'm hoping that someone is saying that there is to be more funding in KDOT.
That good.
Okay, are you ready to move on into the? Okay, policy. Okay, so first item under policy then is under the appraiser's office. Um, that is to rename the county appraiser to state. Pardon me? Okay, uh, under corrections, so this one is a carryover uh from last year. And that's to amend Senate Bill 228 to add juvenile detention facilities. Uh, Senate Bill 228 directs Kdad's to reimburse counties for costs related to holding a person in custody while awaiting examination, evaluation, or treatment to restore competency to stay in trial. And Stevie Stonehouse and Rusty.
And right now juvenile is not included into that, right?
No, that was written for adults only. Um, we have some draft language that I've sent to the counselor's office that we could talk with Jason about, whether it's, there's a likelihood of getting that amended. Um, the numbers aren't huge, but we have kids that are sitting here waiting to go to Kansas City. Uh, Steve had a couple of others that were carried with last year, but we want to be more specific on those, so I pulled them off for the time being. So I'm determined if there's other support.
We'll likely get some more added on here.
Potentially.
Got it. Okay.
Steve, anything else?
There'll be an ask for additional funding on, for me, corrections. Be the 30-year ask for that. That's, we're just finalizing with that one.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Okay, the next item is what Commissioner Howell was alluding to at the beginning of staff meeting. So the way that this reads is to modify statute for any election precinct separated from other precincts by any public right-of-way, county or township roads, or similar geographical divisions may be combined with an adjacent precinct as long as the political districts are the same for each of the combined districts. And so this did make it on KC's platform under county governance number six. I'm happy to turn this over to Commissioner Howell if he wants to speak to this.
I think I did a reasonable job explaining this earlier, but it is a statewide problem, so it's a statewide interest. This is, I think easily, easily fixed. It's just, without doing this, anybody who's interested in understanding the election date is gonna be very bothered with what we're currently doing as a state. And I'm trying to do everything, everything I can, advocate for as much transparency and accountability as possible. This is, this is a really big issue in that regard, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, next item then is to modify statute for precinct person election results data shall not be considered final or official until county canvassing is complete. Election commissioner or county clerk of a county shall be afforded up to three days, excuse me, three business days to transmit the official results for precinct elections to the office of the Kansas Secretary of State.
That's one of mine as well. I guess right now, the way this works is the, there, there is a short time between the primary and the general election. And so there's an anxiousness on part of precinct people to be declared the winners and get busy with what they do. And right now, I think that the, I can't remember exactly how this worked, but I think the state has, in the, in the past, has declared winners on precinct races before the results are final. This thought, okay.
Okay, that's nice.
Okay, moving into finance and economic development. First bullet is to support general limitation of authority for elected and appointed officials to enter into binding contracts that would obligate the county unless authorized to do so by the Board of County Commissioners. Justin, I might just ask, did this get pulled off of the KC platform? Because I thought it generally was on there.
I, I think what, what they did on that, my recollection was that they, they didn't want to put it on the KC platform because the KC is comprised of independent elected and appointed officials partially. So they, they were going to have it taken up with the Kansas County Commissioners Association platform because they, they viewed it might be a more appropriate legislative platform for that group. That's my understanding what they did.
Moving on. Next one is to support amendments to statutes that allow counties to go out for sales tax in 1/4 cent intervals to allow that to instead be done in 1/8 cent. Lindsay, I don't know if you want to speak to that as well?
Only if commissioners have questions. I think we have the ability to be flexible through whatever ballot resolution we do today that we then take back to the legislature. So I don't know that this even binds us as it is, but we want to put it on there. There's no harm in giving more flexibility.
Well, the statute currently, again, I read the statute not too long ago, it is, it does tell us quarter cent increments. And for us, that's essentially a $40 million difference. And so I, you know, I think if we're looking at something, at least $20 million versus $40 million, we, we don't, we want some flexibility to tailor this amount. Not that we're planning to do anything necessarily, but we need to have more options. Cities can do 8th of a percent, 8th of a percent right now.
Well, and I think, so I was looking at that statute yesterday, and there is a laundry list of specific ballot measures that have been approved, everything from 0.4% to 1.375%. So I tend to think it's more advisory than directory, but I would defer to Justin on that because I think once those stat, once a ballot measure is passed and it's taken to the legislature and the legislature approves, I think that trumps the.
I was just gonna add that I think we might want to look more because I do know there's a, there's a handful of statutes. And I don't know if Commissioner Howell was thinking of potentially a different statute because I do know that they're, I think they're both, both of what you're saying are true to a degree. And I'm not sure there's a clear answer on the conflict that Lindsay's pointing out, but I, we can look into it further. And obviously, like Tanya was saying, as we'd flesh out these descriptions of items, we could reference the specific statute to, we need to.
Okay, next one then is to support a change to the current distribution formula for the county's one-cent sales tax. The distribution is based in part upon the county's and city's mill levies. The essence of a municipality lowers its mill levy and other municipalities all keep their mill levies the same. The, excuse me, the municipality that lowered its mill levy also receives a smaller portion of the sales tax. Applicable statute is KSA 12-192. The change could be to include the assessed evaluation as the calculation instead of the total tangible property levings, which is partially dependent on the mill levy.
One part, I'm parsing words here, but we need to change that to 1%, not 1 cent. Thank you.
That's a big one.
Biz and Justin had a really good idea about instead of having the half distributed based on our property tax levy. So it's based on the dollars generated to instead have it based on our assessed value so that there's no incentive or disincentive to any government increasing or lowering its mill levy. So I think that makes really good sense and it puts us way more equal. So still half based on population, but then that other half changed to instead be based on assessed value. I think that's an excellent, very specific change that can be made that would really benefit the county.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, next one is a carryover from last year, and that is to amend Senate Bill 13 to allow for adjustments to the revenue neutral rate.
And specifically that's the revenue neutral rate. We had, I think, four different ideas last year. It was very lukewarm reception from the commission. I think the one main thing that we want is that when we are levying a tax on behalf of another entity, for example, the 1.5 mils for WSU, that should not be used against us. They are, by state law, required to get all that money. We would actually have to reduce the rest of our operating budget levy in order to make up for that gap regardless of what the commission chose to do. And that is ridiculous. And that can be true for library boards or recreation boards or any number of things that other governments. So it's not just a sedentary county problem. But that would be at least the one plain common sense thing that I think we could do that even the legislature really shouldn't fumble with. There are other changes and I can maybe set that up for staff meeting discussion if there's any interest from the commission. Hey, we'll do that. We won't talk about it today.
Next item then is to support a review of RHIV statutes for county policy impacts.
Yeah, we should probably, we'll get with Watkins to figure out what that specificity needs to look like, but yeah, certainly.
This one's urgent because this is being basically misused very quickly. There's gonna be a lot of precedent if we can get on this one very quickly. Second of all, I met with Menon Housing last week. We had a two or three-hour tour. It was pretty interesting, but one of the things that they, one of the things I learned about that was they do IRBs to avoid sales tax on their construction projects. But IRBs do contain a bond cost. And it would be nice on this topic, I guess, to enlarge this just a little bit and just simply say if it's a nonprofit builder who's building affordable housing, that there should be a sales tax exemption, there's not a sales tax exemption option through the state that's not on IRB. We should not have to vote on this locally. This ought to be something they apply to the state for a sales tax exemption. As a nonprofit builder providing affordable housing, it should be state function and not require IRBs. Is that clear enough? Is that, is anybody need that for their explanation on that? This, again, the sales tax piece plus the bond cost. If they, if they, you know, some jurisdictions, you know, sales taxes are as much as, you know, eight or nine or 10%. That's a lot of money, but even if they get the IRBs, the bond costs are typically about 3% or 4% of their entire project. So this, this lowers the cost of what they're trying to do, their mission, or they're wasting money on bond costs. They could actually avoid that cost entirely. If we would simply give the state, state would simply consider this as a, a qualified nonprofit sales tax exemption for housing. Pardon me? I think, I don't know how the state, how KDOR would, Kansas Department of Revenue would, would view this, whether it has to be by application, by project, or they just be by right. I think, I think both ideas are fine, but somehow we need to get there. I think right now they're using IRBs, which I think is, again, totally misused. That tool's not the, not the right tool for what we're trying to do.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to MAPD. The first one is a carryover from last year, and that's to amend KSA 66-2019 to allow local governments to consider self-tower zoning and conditional use cases. The second one is new, and that's to amend property tax guidance in order to tax short-term rentals at a commercial rate instead of residential rate. Okay, next item then is Public Works, and this is to modify statute that would shield municipalities from liability if they would go above and beyond MTCD, which is the Traffic Engineers Guidelines Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices requirements, and wouldn't be, wouldn't then be responsible if they would remove that additional condition. Okay, the next one then is Regional Forensic Science Center. I'm gonna swap the order of these in the way I state this. So the first item then is to change state law and or enactment of a state law that would enable county coroner to dispose of the remains, generally created remains of unclaimed individuals in a manner consistent with state laws that apply to mortuary services providers. The second item then is to change to state law and or enactment of a state law that would enable county coroners to dispose of personal property of the deceased in a similar fashion to statutes that apply to sheriffs. I'll have Rusty's.
If Dr. Stedman's in the room. And this is driven largely by the recurring request about how we're managing remains. Not that we're doing anything inappropriate or disrespectful, but interpretation, working with our attorneys, the interpretation of existing law is that when we cremate a person's remains, we're obligated to maintain, console of those eternally. Unless a family comes forward and claims them. And the same thing with the property is that with existing law, we don't have the ability to dispose of that unless next of kin or appropriate heir comes forward and we're able to move that to them in instances where bodies are unclaimed and next of kin hasn't been located or family has been located, but they've disavowed or otherwise been denied acceptance of. Then we're in a position where we're maintaining those forever. We make contract with a mortuary service who does the cremation, and they will store those for us. But the contract is very clear that those remain responsibility in custody of the county. And if ever the contract ends, we bring those from their facility to our facility and we keep those. So by changing this law, it would give more latitude for us to find other alternatives to move those on to the next realm as opposed to being in our custody forever. I know that Dr. Stedman probably has some ideas on and thoughts on this, but this is something that we're looking at. And I know we have some draft language relative to these statutes. Dr. Stedman needs to vet this with other corners in the state. We need to talk to the lobbyist about this as well. So Dr. Stedman, anything you want to?
Other coroners having the same discussion?
I don't think so. I asked that question and Johnson County currently has no unclaimed. They have one unidentified, but no unclaimed. So they're, they're a larger county. Kind of unique to Cedric County in that we're in a position where we have a big population, we have a homeless population. Not all these are homeless. These folks, some of these folks have, have family and homes that just don't have a financial obligation or will. Anyway, we'll, we'll advance this a little bit more, see what their other partners in the state think and.
Interesting. Thank you. It's a big deal.
These are, I think, important. What my worry is, is that we're gonna try and get this down to this. Okay, and this Regional Forensic Science Center, when we got 450 bodies that are cremated and all of their worldly goods that we're still having to track and, and we're adding more all the time. This is an important issue. And I don't want it to get lost trying to get down to a little one-half a pager that we're gonna have. So I, I don't know what we have to do to make sure that this is an important issue that gets before the legislature. But it's certainly more important than some of the other things we've got listed under policy.
It's, I'm already working with legal counsel and like I said, Dr. Stedman and I will get together on this and vet this through some of the other corners in the state to make sure there's no concerns or opposition. We'll vet this out and we'll come back to you later.
Okay, very good.
Okay, the next item is under sheriff, and that's terrain state Medicaid coverage for Cedric County detention units.
I haven't emailed. I saw an email come across here recently, so very good.
Next items are just generally under Cedric County. So first item is to remove KSA 791613, which is property tax relief to damaged structures.
Yep, I know the guy who wrote that originally.
I did. He's kind of an idiot, he asked me. It was me, by the way.
Yes, yes, yes. Go ahead, Tanya.
Okay, next item then is to support regional water and groundwater contamination issues affecting cities and the agriculture industry. I did reach out to Jessica and she said that this conversation on water will be led by Representative Jim Minitz to Commissioner Dennis's question. He had a question on whether or not that was gonna come up. I did ask her if there was anything we could put in their language as far as the bill goes specifically to our region. She wasn't able to answer that yet and asked Jason on any insight, but I haven't heard anything on that yet.
Okay, we'll keep pushing them on that. Yeah.
Sure. Okay, next item then is unilateral annexation. County has no representation. And then the last item is constitutional home rule. And just for your information, that is on the KC platform under legislative priority.
All right.
So that concludes everything as far as the draft. Happy to hear if we missed something.
I actually am really impressed. This is a great list. Thank you for collecting this over the last year. This has been, come with someone says, we need to get that on the platform. You did a good job keeping that on the, on the list. So thank you for your great work. There's one more I'm working on. This is kind of a trailer to previous year's work. I think the driver's licensing actually is working pretty good right now. We're gonna let this sit for a year and see if we need to do anything else. But right now, the state has substantially solved that problem. And I want to say thank you for all you that have been supportive of that and helping us get that legislation passed. There is one thing I've worked on for a number of years, and again, I'm on the, the chairman has allowed me to sit on the EMCU board. We meet quarterly and again, I've continued to ask our sheriff and district attorney and our judges if they feel like we have substantially solved, solved all of the needs for, for corrections. And I know I'm looking at Rusty, if you might have an opinion on this as well, or Stephen Stonehouse. I think there's some things to do still. I met with Amber Hope for, I think, about two hours or so last week. Had a very, very great discussion with Amber Hope that if you don't know, they take on the county's contract for foster care. And they are out the gate. They're, they're talking about all kinds of significant challenges with foster care. But my interest, my interest on that was on the correction side, how does this impact what they tried to do? And the problem is there actually is a connection. Our corrections is still impacting the, you know, basically DCF and foster care are basically picking up pieces from, basically legislatively, there's, there's not segregation between these two populations. They are mingled and foster care is taken in the short, in the shorts basically because they get bad placements in foster care, these people check out. They will never do that again. And so we've got juvenile offender children that basically are not good for foster care placements generally, but there is no other great options. So we came up with at least three items that I thought were reasonable, they supported, and I actually think are also really good. I would like to present those, I guess, to our staff here. And I guess at least the chairman, others are interested in that. I'm gonna try to get those articulated and writing and maybe get those distributed. And I guess at least the chairman, other, others are interested in that. I'm going to try to get those articulated and writing and maybe get those distributed to you all. Um, but they came up with three things. And then as a consequence of that meeting, meet, meeting, and I also talked to the DA and the sheriff again. We would like to get together one more time on November the twenty-sixth, uh, eleven thirty to one. And I've invited uh some legislators that are on the committees that serve those populations as well as the judges, as well as the um corrections uh folks here in the county, some DCF people, some foster care folks. Um, and maybe, I mean, hopefully we didn't miss anybody. The DA and sheriff will have people there as well, if not themselves. Basically to talk about, you know, we've made some help, we've made some, some fixes to three sixty-seven. But from their perspective, we're still not right there. And so I'd like to hear from them. Um, come in and have them articulate what they perceive the problems are and have them proceed, have them present, if you, if you will, what their desire is to, to address or fix the problem. So I know I've got a list from Amber Hope already. Um, again, they'll be at that meeting. I'd like to just say today, let me just say there are improvements to Senate Bill three sixty-seven. What that means exactly, I don't know that I can tell you that today. I just know there's work to do. So I know it's been on our platform in the years past. We have made, we have made some progress each and every year. But I would tell you, we're not, we're not there yet. And so improvements or, or addressing, if you will, policy issues that are, that were a part of Senate Bill three sixty-seven was passed in twenty seventeen. We'd like to address those, some of those provisions once again. So we're going to come together and talk about it and see if we can agree as a group. Uh, what are those uh most important things and correct to address that from that, from that meeting? Uh, honing in on exactly what we're asking for with crisp uh recommendations and that will feed into this item here, hopefully that says Senate Bill three sixty-seven. How does that impact the county commission? It does because of corrections. We got a lot of correction staff. It does because of the DA and it is because of the sheriff. And uh, he also does because in the community is Ryan, continue, Commissioner Brady continues talking about, we have a foster care challenge in this community. This ties into that as well. So I think it's very relevant. I hope this will stay on the, on the list.
We break up. Uh, Tanya, great job. You kept track of this all year long. Uh, I know that in past years we'd come up with great ideas and then forget them before we got ready to put our legislative agenda together. Uh, but you did a great job keeping track of all these. Uh, some of them may need a little bit of fleshing out, but uh, I, I want to applaud you for taking care of it. So thank you.
Great job, Tanya. Very good.
Yeah, uh, sure. Um, Commissioners, um, I would like to introduce Michelle Bastian. Uh, Michelle comes to us from Wichita State. She has a master's in supply chain management and she is going to be um our intern um, until May. Uh, and so it's been a struggle to um hire interns, but Michelle comes to us. Uh, she's got a past working for Costco and then also Cargill. And so we're very happy to have her on board. So I think she's going to do a great job for us.
It's always good to have a lot of smart people running around.
Amen.
Yeah, welcome. We're glad you're here. Okay, good job today, Tanya. Rusty, good job when you pinch hit too. That's fantastic. Tom, anything?
That's it.
That's it. We'll take up large events uh another day. Okay, thanks guys. See you tomorrow. No, no, no meeting tomorrow. No meeting tomorrow. I lied. Go vote.